... and pledge.
It's about our heads. Dear gracious heavenly father, God, we thank you so much for this and another day that you've given us. God, we're so grateful, Lord, for our wonderful blessings that you bestowed upon us today. Lord, the blessings that we've seen, Lord, and the blessings that we've not even thought about today. Lord, I come to you now and ask that you bless this city. May you bless this city, Lord, in its growth, and just bless us as we go our separate ways on our way home, Lord. We always thank you, dear gracious heavenly name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. March twenty first, five o'clock. I'd like to call to order the Corbin City Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Moore, here. Reeves?
Here.
Knuckles?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Rasmus?
Here. The first thing I get to do is present a Corbin Colonel to the twenty twenty-two Corbin Middle School Cheerleaders. They were the runner-up in the large junior high game day division at Nationals. We are thrilled for you all, girls. So proud of you. Come on up. Let's give your order. Excellent. Y'all have what to leave. All right, if I get around us, short ones in the front. Like me, I'm a short one, so I'll get in front of you all.
Okay.
All right. That work?
Uh, you all. Act like you like each other.
All right. Am I ready?
No, you still.
Squeeze together.
Oh, closer, closer. Y'all can, you wanna get some? Y'all wanna get down? That work? You got everybody?
We'll make it work.
All right. Who's not in it?
Uh, we got everybody now.
Good job, girls. So proud of you all. And you all do not have to stay for this meeting if you don't want to. You're more than welcome to head on out, all right? Or you can stay, whatever you want. That's what I figured. Congratulations. All right. Next on the agenda is to approve the February bills for payment.
Motion?
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Approve the minutes from the February twenty-second special call meeting.
I make the motion.
Second. Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one and ordinance pursuant to KRS eighty-two four hundred subsection three declaring certain tract of real property as being dedicated as a city street and accepting said dedication whereupon said real property shall be a city street, naming said city street Genie Lane, establishing a speed limit on said street and setting fine jurisdiction and venue for violation of this ordinance, second reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one and ordinance to the city of Corbin, Kentucky pursuant to KRS eighty-two four hundred subsection three declaring certain tract of real property as being dedicated as a city street and accepting said dedication whereupon said real property shall be a city street, naming said city street Genie Lane, establishing a speed limit on said street and setting a fine jurisdiction or venue for violation of this ordinance, second reading, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve said ordinance. Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. All right. Next is to discuss and authorize city attorney to draft a municipal order creating a deadline for the annual city audit.
The last audit report gave Floyd Simons and Wallace recommended that we put on there that the deadline was October each year.
So they were, and I'm sorry I wasn't here last month, so they're, they're okay with that. The only reason that concerns me is that they were the only one that even bid on the, on our audit, so I don't wanna end up bumping the only people that, you know what I mean? But if they're fine with it.
I agree, but I don't want.
I think he also said too, like, if you, if we just give them an absolute deadline, they'll follow it. Is that what he said?
Yes.
Okay.
I think October first, you leave it sufficient.
Typically, typically in the past, the audit would be presented in October. So obviously by the end of October.
He said in that meeting, he would recommend that it's like by the end of October.
Yeah.
October the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Yes.
All right, who wants to make that in a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the city attorney to draft a municipal order.
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. All right. Next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two Pride Spring Cleanup Proclamation. All right, April twenty-two, April twenty twenty-two is spring cleanup month, if you didn't know, and whereas the natural beauty of southern and eastern Kentucky is a treasure for its residents and tourists, whereas good stewardship of this distinctive environment is beneficial for the health, enjoyment, and economic prosperity of the residents of southern and eastern Kentucky, whereas Pride Initiative encourages residents of southern and eastern Kentucky to take personal responsibility for the good stewardship of the region's exceptional environment, and whereas the annual Pride Spring Cleanup is an opportunity for residents to demonstrate personal responsibility by volunteering to pick up litter along road sides, and whereas the city of Corbin is participating in the Pride Spring Cleanup by organizing cleanup events and recruiting volunteers, be it resolved that I, Mayor Susie Rasmus, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-two to be Pride Spring Cleanup Month in the city of Corbin, be it further resolved that I encourage all residents of the city of Corbin to participate in Pride Spring Cleanup Month, given unto my hand this twenty-first day of March twenty twenty-two. So, everybody get out and pick up some litter, and if anybody wants to organize a cleanup, uh, that would be amazing, and there is free bags, there's gloves, um, that are available, so, uh, y'all get out there and take care of our city and keep Corbin clean. All right. Next is to approve tax refund to Timothy or Brenda Moore for the following: twenty twenty-one bill number twenty-four twenty-five for a hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. They were eligible for homestead exemption.
Make a motion to approve. Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Approve the lease agreement with Nebrok AA Group for office space at City Hall. Do y'all know about this? Do y'all talk about this last night?
You got two here? Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
All right. They need a new space.
Seven herbs, I was wondering.
Yes. Oh, your center and this one before. When does it start? How? It started last month. They actually had to have the place, it had to be out, so.
Really make it, make it work as hard as you can, but, um, I guess this is, this space will happen.
Well, their comment was that it was a little too expensive for them, so. And then, uh, they are, we did not give them any keys. They have to get the keys from the dispatch center when they open it, open it up, so that's what got them. Yes, they bring them back.
I think it'll be nice and handy for them. It's a, it's a nice space, so I'm glad that worked out. All right. Motion, anyone?
I make a motion to approve, approve the lease agreement.
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two and ordinance establishing the city of Corbin Historic Preservation Board, providing for its duties and encouraging the preservation of historic buildings and sites in Corbin, Kentucky, second reading.
First reading. Third.
First reading.
That's all right.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two and ordinance establishing the city of Corbin Historic Preservation Board, providing for its duties and encouraging the preservation of historic buildings and sites in Corbin, Kentucky, whereas rehabilitation of historic buildings and sites is needed in Corbin, Kentucky, and whereas Corbin maintains many buildings and sites that illustrate its history and its role in the development of the city of Corbin, Kentucky, surrounding counties, and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and whereas many buildings and sites in the United States of America have historic architectural or cultural values have been neglected, altered, destroyed, and now notwithstanding the feasibility and desirability of preserving and continuing the use of such buildings and sites, and without adequate consideration of the irreplaceable loss of the public, now therefore be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Corbin, Kentucky as follows: Section one, purpose and declaration of public policy. The Board of Commissioners declares as a matter of public policy that preservation, protection, and use of historic buildings and sites is a public necessity because they have a need, they have a historic architectural and cultural value, and thus serve as visible reminders of the history and heritage of the city of Corbin, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America. The Board of Commissioners finds that the ordinance benefits all residents of Corbin, Kentucky, and all the owners of property, and declares as a matter of public policy that this ordinance is required in the interest of health, prosperity, safety, welfare, and economic well-being of the people. Purpose of this ordinance is to achieve the goals set forth in the above findings and declaration of public policy, and specifically but not exclusively to help with preservation, protection, and use of historic buildings and sites having historic architectural or cultural value in Corbin, Kentucky, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America, promote the educational, cultural, and economic general welfare of the people, and safeguard the city of Corbin's history and heritage, which is reflected in such buildings and sites, stabilize and improve property value in the city of Corbin, foster civic pride in the notable accomplishments of the past, strengthen the economy of the city of Corbin, protect and enhance the city of Corbin's attractions to residents and tourists, and encourage owners of historic buildings to renovate and establish businesses. Section two, the city of Corbin's Historic Preservation Board, there is hereby established the city of Corbin Historic Preservation Board. The board shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor and approved by the Board of Commissioners. The board shall include a chairman appointed by the mayor and to the extent four persons with interest or experience in architecture, history, architectural history, archaeology, or other preservation-related field. The term of office of the chairman and member shall be two years unless sooner removed by the mayor, except the terms of two members of the board shall expire after one year. Each member shall serve until the appointment qualification of his or her successor, and if vacancy occurs during a term of office, it shall be filled as provided for herein both within sixty days, and the person selected shall be appointed for the unexpired portion of the term. Members of the board shall serve without compensation, but they shall be reimbursed for expenses incurred in performance of their duties. No member of the board shall participate in any matter that may affect property, income, or business interests of that member. Section three, powers and duties of the board. In addition to the powers and duties stated elsewhere, the board shall take action necessary and appropriate, and appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this ordinance. These actions may include, but are not limited to, requests and received donations applied for grants and received grants in this first same in order to assist in implementing the purposes and policies set forth in this ordinance, advise and assist owners of historic buildings and sites that potential grants and low-interest loans may be available to restore and preserve historic buildings and sites, identifying historic buildings threatened with destruction, including those needing major repairs and suggesting to the owners ways those buildings and sites can be preserved, collecting material on the preservation of historic building sites and suggesting to owners appropriate ways to make necessary repairs and door changes. In addition, the board may prepare plans for the preservation and rehabilitation of the individual historic buildings and sites, hold meetings to educate the public on preservation and its potential economic impact to the city of Corbin, and place historic markers on buildings with consent of the owner. Section four, historic buildings and historic sites. The board should conduct a survey of the historic buildings in the city of Corbin. The board may use the inventory of historic buildings in the city of Corbin prepared by the Kentucky Heritage Council, and the board may conduct its survey in accordance with the guidelines of the Heritage Council if it deems that appropriate. The board should include properties that meet more and more of the following criteria for any of the survey of historic buildings and sites. The property is a significant reminder of cultural or archaeological heritage of the city of Corbin, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America. Its location is a site of significant city of Corbin, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America, and it is identified with a person or persons who significantly contributed to the development of the city of Corbin, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America. It is the work of a master builder, designer, or architect whose individual work has influenced the development of the city of Corbin, surrounding counties, Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the United States of America. As value, because of the quality of its architecture, it remains sufficient elements showing its architectural significance, or it has distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style suitable for the study of a period method of construction or use of indigenous materials. Section five, separability. Any section of this ordinance shall be declared void or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions shall continue to have full force and effect. Section six, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption and publication of same. Section seven, repeal conflicting ordinances. All ordinances conflicting herewith are hereby repealed to the extended conflict, first reading, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve your establishing the city of Corbin Historic Preservation Board?
Can we discuss this real quick? Because I've got maybe a potential change. So there's two things in here I'm thinking maybe left over from the fact that we know this, and I believe it's probably away from another town somewhere. The first is the fact that the mayor appoints the chairman of the board. It seems kind of weird. I think all the boards pretty much decide who the chairman's gonna be, just among their members. The second thing would be that the mayor can remove members of the board early. I think that the first should be changed to say that, um, the board can select a chairman from among their members, and the second part should say that, um, nobody can be removed from the board unless they are removed by a majority vote of the city commission. I think that's pretty much all I have. No, I'd rather first read it. Just make the change right now.
Yeah.
Do I think to make a motion that we remove that to say?
Yes.
You don't have to make a motion. This is a change. Just change it. Then we'll go on to the board itself as changes. Seems to be the way. I'll try to move that a bit more. This is great.
Huh?
It's great.
Yeah, it's great.
I think just taking that, appointing by the mayor, that part of that sentence just knew that. The board shall include a chairman and to the extent of that, four persons with interest in his property.
That works. So we take that point.
Uh-huh. After chairman.
Just pick a chairman.
And then after two years, just remove unless sooner removed by the mayor. No.
Um, I think you wanna have a mechanism to remove somebody if they're part of the board. Laura, I've been off.
Sorry, Bob.
Oh, sure.
So.
The only other question I have is just like the background of the chairperson. Does the area, does that just like, just experience, or do they have to have education background on that, or a combination of both, or, um, like, is historic preservation, like, normally that entails like somebody that's done like a program that has lots, because I don't really know a lot of people that do preservation that doesn't have a degree, so I was just curious on thoughts on that. I don't know.
What worries me is we're a small city, and it's hard to get people to serve on board, so I think interest, you know, we will, of course, try to find people that, that, you know, have that expertise, because that certainly will make, make for a better board.
I've already had one gentleman, give me his name and info to be on that board, he's been doing this for a long time.
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of calls too, so that's good. It's a good problem to have. Okay. All right. I will again make the motion to approve the ordinance for establishing the city of Corbin Historic Preservation Board.
Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Appoint Scott Easter as our A B C Administrator.
With Nicole leaving us, uh, we need to appoint Scott and get her efficient as the A B C Administrator. Remove this layer in tomorrow.
Make a motion to appoint Scott Easter as the A B C Administrator?
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore? Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Hire Cody Burnett as full-time employee in the maintenance department.
He has been here helping the city hall. Thanks, guys, and he's a very good employee, and I mean, I recognize him, he's on full time. He has been six months.
Motion to hire Cody Burnett, full-time employee in maintenance department.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Hire Tracy Scott as full-time employee in the recreation department.
Tracy has been a seasonal employer. Her time is about to expire, but she's a very good worker, and we would hire her full-time at thirty-five hours a week.
I make a motion to approve city manager's suggestion. Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Reappoint Dee Barnes to the library ward, and her term expires April sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion?
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Appoint Allison Moore to Corbin Industrial Development Commission. I don't know if y'all know her or not, but she's really great.
Would you ever had a commissioner on every day? No offense to Allison, I'm sure she'd be a good woman member, but I kinda like the fact that those boards are sort of independent, and they have commissioners on them, but I think we just find somebody else to be on them.
Well, I have appointed Allison, so I'd need a motion to approve her.
That's the, the point is, is that you make those boards to kind of, you know, remove some of the political considerations from it. If you have somebody elected on there, it's sort of, you know, changes the, I mean, you know.
So do we need to enlist the following boards, Dee Barnes, and more, and questioning, and there's people for everything?
Well, no.
At least I'm alive, there's zero on the board. So you can recall?
I'd pick those off if we were bonding here. I mean, I don't really see a problem with it.
There's, there's not a lot going on on that board, to be honest, but sorry, Allison.
No.
It's not, I mean, all that's, I mean, the trouble out here, the southeast park out there.
Now.
Now.
That's, that's the board that controlled the Tri-County Industrial Park, and, and now that's, is there any land left there? Maybe there is, but.
The main river was sold. I think the main river was sold. Never said the name.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. I think there's vacancy, and we need somebody. I don't see anybody that would announce, and so I'll make a motion to approve her.
Do we have a second?
Well, I'm just like, the only thing I can think of too is just, um, as far as like commissioners and politicians serving on boards and everything. I know like we did that with Seth because he was already on the board and everything, and, um, and then Susie was, you got on the budget committee, and so I agree, I just think like, I don't want to like over politicize any boards at all, because those boards are set up for regular people to be on them that are not elected.
Who set up the boards?
Well, the city, the city, I guess it has, right?
So the mayor appoints him.
Right, but we're, we're, we're a commission former government too, though, so.
Sounds like it dials for lack of a second, so I'll go back to the, go back to the drawing board on that. All right, uh, now it's time to appoint the personnel and budget committee boards, and I will put Trent Knuckles and Brandon Shepherd on the personnel board, Allison Moore and Seth Reeves on the budget committee. Does that need to have a motion, Bob?
Make a motion to approve the board deployments. Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Next is to discuss business license for year-round consumer firework retailers. Marlon, can you tell us about this?
Uh, we have a, I'll let Scott come up. She can probably explain whether she has worked with it. We don't have a license for, say, if a business comes in.
Do you have an ordinance currently?
Go ahead, Scott.
We have an ordinance currently, but, uh, there's a fee on permanent fireworks retailers, which is fifteen hundred dollars per location. We don't have a business license. So seasonal fireworks has two fifty fee and a hundred dollar to your business license. So do you guys wanna do like a flat rate for a permanent fireworks sale?
And this would.
Is there anything we can do to not have a permanent fireworks?
If so, we need to change the ordinance we already have.
This would be if we had a business come in and opened up, sold year-round to it, affect that, right?
That's what.
Yes, that's basically what it is.
Currently, that's why.
I think there may be a state statute that compares year-round.
I think that is for, um, what's the big fireworks where they're called? Is it different?
Like stuff that goes in the air?
Like what we do at the arena, like you can't do that, but I think if you're just doing the smaller stuff, you're fine. Now, what we build up, you know, the, the consumer is what you're not allowed.
For the consumer is what you're allowed, but the big ones, I think it was like wreath.
Well, we, well, we just look into it, make sure. We can always address it, but if you think of just like all of them. Year-round, so you're talking about somebody that's gonna sell somewhere year-round?
Yeah.
All right, I, I just see, I just see a real problem with that.
That's why, that's why they're all down in Tennessee.
Yeah. I mean, we struggle with the two weeks and the New Year's Eve, as it is, with our noise, no, noise ordinance, noise ordinance, so I can't imagine.
Next, maybe the men's ordinance, or can you do that now?
We don't have it in front of us, do we, or do you have it?
Oh. We are, we have those current torches from fireworks, it's kind of what we got here.
They're not stable.
So it could be moved.
I, I think if you put this permanent fireworks retailer, retail department. You expect them to read this?
I'm just saying, it's in there. I'm not gonna read it.
I'll just have to look at that. I mean, if you just, if you don't want permanent fireworks retailers, then you need them, then just strike that out, and then you're, can you totally ban them?
Well, we banned other businesses.
We can, if you guys want to ban them, it's good.
I just, I just see it being a real issue with our police department and with our, with our citizens, because if they're, if they're, they're there to sell, you know, it's gonna be people wanting to shoot them off for any event that they have, they're.
Why don't we just table it and look into it?
Because there's somebody asking about it.
Well, here, I'd wait for you.
Well, we're not here.
Just tell them to table that, you know, that a prominent store.
Yeah, if he wants to sell other things, if anybody wants to sell those year-round, that's something he's only should be targeting. Yeah, if he wants to sell other things, if somebody wants to sell those year-round, that's something he's only should be targeting. Well, we don't have a price for a business license for it, so we, we can't. What do we do?
I need you to read this, I first I heard about it. I need y'all to actually, I don't even want to, is ban permanent fireworks retailers?
I recommend we just table it so we can have some information.
Yeah, I agree. I make a motion to table that.
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Accept resignation of dispatcher Amanda Woods.
She turned in a letter, um, says to whom it may concern due to personal and financial reasons, I'm resigning as my position of dispatcher for Corbin Police Department effective March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with all of you. I've enjoyed getting to know everyone and the memories I've made with you. All kind regards, Amanda Woods.
Make a motion to accept resignation of Amanda Woods.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Authorize City Manager Marlon Samms to advertise for dispatchers.
What's that put us down now, two or three? Two?
Four?
Four.
Down?
And possibility of losing one more.
Hey, what, what do we pay right now for dispatchers still paying?
Eleven seventy-five after the Google Academy.
All right.
Eleven dollars starting, maybe eleven seventy-five after the.
So I'm thinking, is that enough? Well, okay.
Rusty, come on up.
The area dispatch centers, they're at least starting their dispatchers out, no less than thirteen dollars an hour. We've got some that's been here six years, make eleven seventy-five. That's what Amanda left for two dollars more an hour, we go back to Wilt County.
I think we've got kind of an emergency here. I mean, if we're four, down four?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if we're down four?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, we maybe want to, probably consider raising that up like now, starting pay. The only thing is, we have to consider is, if you've got somebody that's been here six years or making eleven seventy-five, you're going to have to, you can't, then start somebody out at thirteen, so they're going to have to go up to.
I agree.
This has been an issue for, for quite a while now and it's getting harder and harder like to hire people for any position, but especially for that job.
I think it's absolutely a money thing, because it's.
It is.
They, they would only affect one right now, at eleven seventy-five?
Yeah, court inmates, well, Tracy is what I was going to mention, but, uh, yeah, Tracy important, Jennifer makes more than that as the Dispatch Supervisor and Russ.
Top and Wood, Russ, it'd be my recommendation, make just those two and then you make the decision in which we start the new ones out there.
I just don't, I don't, I don't see how we, I think we want to actually go up. I just don't see how we can. You can make eleven dollars an hour at Burger King now, that's what they're hiring for, I saw it down on their sign, eleven dollars an hour. So.
So do we have a motion?
So I think, well, there's two things we gotta, there's two things we gotta, go ahead.
So there's the two employees, right?
Mm-hmm.
That need raised now to thirteen dollars an hour?
Yes. Well, I don't think you can raise people that have six years of experience up to what you're starting somebody out at. See what I'm saying, they're going to have, does that make sense?
Well, we're not starting people out right now. I think that, I think that that's going to take a little bit more, you know, we, we could do a special call meeting or, or whatever on that. I don't, I don't know if we're, are we ready for that?
I would recommend that we put those two, they're making eleven seventy-five, put them up to thirteen dollars an hour and then the new hires, start them out at twelve dollars an hour and then within a year's time, after probation, move them up to thirteen dollars an hour.
What, what do you suggest?
That's a good starting point, but I believe that thirteen is the minimum, we're going to get somebody to start.
If they're going everywhere else around us and getting thirteen.
What do you suggest?
And you can probably.
Well, then we need to go up an, we need to go up to fourteen then for the two that have been here.
Yeah.
So you want to go fourteen for those two, adjust them and then thirteen will be the starting point?
I think that's what we need to do.
Because if not, we're going to lose the other two.
Well, we can't, we can't do that, so.
And they're very good. We're lucky to have them, the ones that we have.
Okay.
Very good, tell you, they do an excellent job.
Okay.
They're at first line of defense.
Absolutely.
We got to have.
And, and they've been here for, going on.
I would have to look at each other's time, but Russ has been here, he's been here seventeen, eighteen years, yeah, you know.
So we'll definitely look at every one of them during the budget. Process.
But since, yeah, they're like a first line of defense, I would even suggest like going up to fifteen dollars an hour. Just my, I mean, I'm just being, I mean, they do a really important job and, and, uh, you know, there's even places that are even starting at fifteen dollars an hour that, that do not have the stresses of a job like that, you know, so, uh, that's my suggestion that we, we could go with the fifteen dollars an hour for the ones that, uh, have been here with us.
So.
Or.
What makes sense to me?
Just because, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, if we do that, we have officers that don't spend fifteen dollars.
We're getting ahead of our, we're getting into a budget, we're getting into a budget busting situation here. I mean, we've got to factor all of that in. I, I think, I hear what you're saying.
We can, we can do fourteen and then we'll reevaluate, I guess.
For, for the existing and then we go thirteen for starting dispatch. And after one year probation, because if you're going back to the same thing, you'll keep losing, you're going to get them at fourteen dollars an hour. Okay, so I make, I make a motion that we do what I said just a minute ago.
Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
Thank you.
You are. Yeah.
Since I'm here, what I had to discuss is along dispatch issues. Um, I'm looking to promote Tracy Rains to Assistant Dispatch Supervisor, uh, since we don't have that anymore in that position.
And what does she make? Would she, is she the one that, so she's the one that'll go up to fourteen then?
I'm just going to request.
Gotcha, all right, so we just change, change her title to Assistant Dispatcher, Tracy Rains.
And Jennifer, I don't think was ever recognized formally in the meeting as the Chief Dispatch Physician.
What's her last name, I'm trying to.
Brennan Stoll.
Brennan Stoll, Jennifer Brennan Stoll, Chief, Tracy Rains, Assistant Chief Dispatcher, both at fourteen an hour and the new hires at thirteen to start and after a year, they will move up to fourteen as well. Okay. I guess I need that in form of a motion.
To promote them?
Yeah, to promote them and to adjust their salary.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, promote Tracy Rains to Assistant Chief Dispatcher and Jennifer Brennan Stoll to Chief Dispatcher.
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Authorize City Manager Marlon Samms to advertise for dispatchers.
Make a motion? Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Next. Yes?
Somebody make a motion to go into executive session, number two, NRS sixty-one point eight ten, section one, subsection C, discuss any litigation of property city and percentage of personnel.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for those reasons.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Moore? Here. Reeves?
Here.
Knuckles?
Here.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Here.
The Board of Commissioners made an executive session, presented to NRS sixty-one point eight ten, section one, C, to discuss any litigation and percent to sixty-one eight ten, one F, to discuss personnel matters, no formal action was taken.
All right, I'm making a motion to set this, uh, negotiations in the lawsuit involving Peachwater property. For the payment of five hundred dollars. Second.
Moore? Yes. Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
Mayor, I have another matter of, I need for you to make a motion to give me the authority to terminate the employment of Jerry Amber in the Corbin Arena.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the City Manager's report.
I'm, uh, going back to the arena, I would like to appoint Chelsea Chambers as the interim Ticket Manager.
I make a motion to appoint Chelsea Chambers as interim Ticket Manager. Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
And then, uh, I have, uh, two requests for annexation. The first one is Danny Brenda and Daniel Wallen, uh, property of nine fifty-two U S twenty-five W. I need your all's approval and then I will turn this over to Patrick Hughes, who will be doing all our annexation.
I make a motion to accept annexation.
Wonderful, second. Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore? Yes. Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
Also have an application for annexation for Stephanie Mills at three oh five Young Street Road, Corbin, Kentucky. For her annexation request, and we turn that over to Patrick Johnson.
Stephanie Mills?
Stephanie Mills.
Is that a resident or a business?
Residential, intercommercial.
What's the address?
Three oh five Young.
Young Street Road, that's in Knox County. That's a bypass. This is out on the bypass.
Make a motion to accept that annexation.
Second.
Where does it border any city property?
Industrial Park and today goes with some of the water sewer out there.
Moore? Yes. Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
Checking my notes, make sure. Okay, uh, I gave you all a proposal for consulting services, retail strategies for them to be able to help us with recruiting of businesses and not only forward city limits, but also exit twenty-five and exit twenty-nine also. And this money come from the ARPA's approved, or part of the money to pay this contract.
I looked over the contract, isn't this basically what Bruce is doing, when he's trying to attract businesses and so on and so forth, or?
Bruce really doesn't have time to do what this company could do, you know, as far as going and, and, uh, talking to, with reach, specific retail businesses. He's more, uh, focused on industrial, you know, getting our sites pad-ready, selling those, that's very complicated, everything that he does out of the business park. He really just does not have time to, you know, to do this, this part of it, so. I think it would, it's really, it's not something that we need long-term, but I think we need it right now, um, just to, to kind of get us, get us moving a little bit. And then I think, you know, as one business comes up, others follow. That's just the way that it is with a lot of these retail.
And they will be working, uh, they're dedicated for people as they promised Maggie and I and the mayor to work on this specifically and they will commiserize themselves with the annexation issue, so we can look on that at exit also, on exit twenty-nine, because we can't go on the right side, basic twenty-nine for annexation issues.
I just have thirty thousand dollars in a lot of money to pay a consultant.
Well, they worked out pretty good for us in the past.
Is it a thirty grand five P or is it like on a, like a basis?
It's twenty-nine nine ninety-nine, I'm sure they look at that. You know, they're familiar with Corbin, they've got the information, they'll go to the corporate headquarters, they'll talk to the right people, where, you know, we don't have that. We can't do that.
This is an investment in our future.
I would like to see economic development be kept in the loop.
Want to share the?
Oh, wait, wait. Yeah.
Yeah, Bruce would have been here today, but his, his mother's sick.
Is there any way to like, I know you all went down and had a two or three day seminar with these folks and I, and I would like to just know for what we're paying for, you know, other than just reading this contract. I mean, I trust or judge them, obviously, but it's always nice to see, you know. I know that they were in Alabama or somewhere, I don't know, they can come up here and give us a presentation.
Oh, but they're all over, they're, they're all over the country and, and, uh, the, the project manager of this is actually from Lexington and lives in Atlanta, but knows our area extensively. And, um, there's a, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that they can, um, contact because that's what they do, you know, but they know these corporate contacts. And, uh, we just, we don't have the time or the expertise to get to the people that we need to be getting to. So I really feel like that this would be a, a true investment in our, in our future and again, those ARPA monies are, you know, they're, they're there to be spent and, uh, I think, I think twenty-nine thousand dollars is, is a, is, it's, it would be well worth it, let's just put it that way. I mean, why, why send us down there, get us fired up over, you know, what we're doing if we then don't follow through with what the recommendations are? And if we don't, you know, get anything out of this, then you all can bring it up and tell, tell us how wrong we are and I, and I would perfectly be willing to accept that. But I'm asking you to, uh, take a chance on this company and to help us grow the City of Corbin.
Bob, did you review the contract with the city?
Did it for what?
Did you get a chance to review the document? There was nothing in it, you couldn't get it.
I, I had a few changes to be made in the provision line that I thought beneficial to the city.
Which they were agreeing, agreeing with the whole two.
Actually, they, oh, they didn't even request more expenses.
Yeah. If you look back here on the exhibit, page, it's the last page, I think, there's, there's twenty-four different details of what they'll be doing and they'll be going to a national conference in, I think it's Las Vegas, they told us, selling City of Corbin for retail. They represent us, he'll have, he told us there'll be three other people besides him working on this. City of Bowling Green has done this, uh, there's two or three other cities.
Richmond.
Richmond has done it. I talked to their mayor, he's very happy.
So they had success with it? What'd they get out of it, do you know?
Well, theirs was specific to downtown and trying to recruit, you know, restructure their downtown area. Um, but, you know, we, the, the Retail Academy was, was a huge eye-opening experience that educated and empowered us as a team to be able to recruit, you know, retail, um, to the city. But part of this contract, and, you know, again with ARPA monies, it is about economic stimulation and revitalization as a, you know, comeback from the coronavirus and all the damage, you know, that that's done to cities and communities across the United States. Um, but with this particular contract too, I mean, you know, exit twenty-nine is a vice. Well, theirs was specific to downtown, and trying to recruit, you know, restructure their downtown area, um, but, you know, we, the, the Retail Academy was, was a huge eye-opening experience, that educated and empowered us, as a team, to be able to recruit, you know, retail, um, to the city, but part of this contract, and, you know, again with ARPA monies, it is about economic stimulation and revitalization as a, you know, comeback from the coronavirus and all the damage, you know, that that's done to cities and communities across the United States, um, but with this particular contract too, I mean, you know, exit twenty-nine is a vital corridor for us, and vital to the growth of Corbin, and we need help, um, you know, I understand, and I'm not a lawyer, it's outside of my legal realm, but we need, we need help to be able to continue to recruit the businesses that, that wanna come into the city legally, um, so that we're not in this gridlock for the rest of our days, and that's what this company can do.
So, you all talked about vision in Bowling Green, do you know what businesses were recruited out into one of those towns, or?
When they come into town, he did give an example.
They still do it?
They're, yes.
They're still the middle of it?
Assistance City Manager, who still does, they still use them, it brings in businesses, uh, just telling, in our area, when they did the demographic, they notified that we don't really have a festival, a certain, uh, we don't have certain restaurants, like the cookout, different things like that, uh, we don't have the farm supply lots, they can tell us down there, no matter if we're ten miles apart, people are looking for that.
And, uh, and exit twenty-nine is a very complicated.
Yeah.
Exit, and so people that are not familiar with our exit, even people that are on that exit right now, are still confused, SB two seven four does allow us to annex, uh, property into Laurel County, this will help us with our messaging.
And it's a one-year, you know, commitment.
Alright, so we need a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. Okay. Alright, Barry, I think you wanted to speak.
I just got a couple of quick things, uh, found out last week, we had, uh, the head chief retired a couple of years ago, and he's on our checking account of the fire department, I need to replace him, and I need y'all's recommendation to do it, I like to put Chad Jackson and James Smith on it, that way we've got four, count myself and Jack Hardin, that can write checks, we need a check written last week, and we couldn't do it, because Jack was teaching a class, so, that's, if y'all will do that for me.
I make a motion to add James Smith and Chad Jackson to the fire department checking account. Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes.
And the last thing, we got up there on our fire truck, uh, they said the chassis should be here by the end of May, and they still hope to have the thing built and ready for us by August, we have the fire convention coming in August, and they still hope to have it ready by the end, so, that's good news, I've been asking.
We need to have a welcome party or something, we need to really make this a big deal, you know? Welcome our new fire truck to Corbin.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Barry. Alright, and, uh, Christie, you wanna do a quick update?
Hi, Mary. Um, I haven't, didn't hear you the past couple times, but I haven't talked to you guys in a while, so I just wanted to run through something real quick, you know, what a difference the past, like, five and a half years have made at the arena, um, we are now getting nominated for awards, so, um, just to share with everybody, um, we were nominated for the, uh, twenty twenty-two Appalachian Arts in their town award, in the category of Best Love Music Venue, um, the nomination means we were in the top three vote-getters, um, for Best Love Music Venue, within the thirteen Appalachian states, that covers all thirteen Appalachian states, not just, that's not just the Kentucky.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so, um, the awards will be filmed and air on, uh, the country network, T C N, uh, which has viewership of over twenty-one, um, and I have been invited to, to go, and, um, I have invited my crew, my core crew, Derek, Angie, those people that really pass my back, um, to go with me, so, I'm excited about that, so.
Congratulations.
Just, uh, just, there's been such a big change, and I know everybody's seen it, um, for thirteenth region, we had pretty much our biggest crowd this year, I would say, um, we had over twenty-one thousand patrons, uh, for thirteenth region tournament this year, and Redbird Commission walked away with almost a hundred thousand dollars for their program, um, just to give you an idea of what that means to them, her budget, her yearly budget up to date is ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
So.
That's like life-changing.
Yeah, that showed you how important it is, what we do for the thirteenth region tournament, especially for schools like Redbird, or Pine Biller, and next year, next year it's South Laurel, so South Laurel's in Pine Biller after that, um, and then we just survived, we've obviously been busy, I've not slept in months, but, um, we succe, successfully survived our first ever state tournament, so, uh, our first ever wrestling state tournament, started with wrestling here, um, it was middle school and youth, and, and, I mean, it was wild, I've never seen anything like it, I was not prepared for it, we had so many people there, in two days, we did twenty-five thousand dollars in concessions. In two days, like, that tells you how busy we were, but they loved it, said it was the best state tournament they've had, um, thought we had the best security that they've ever had, and, um, we are looking for dates for next year, so, that will hopefully turn into better things, but, um, I won't go through everything else, but obviously, um, everybody, the one thing that everybody brings up is Smoot Dog, um, I know that was a surprise for everybody, um, that is not the last surprise, you know, there are more and more things that are gonna be coming, and, and getting bigger, and, so, I'm excited, I used to tell, come up here and tell you guys what I hoped for the future, and now we're there, so, you know, I'm just, uh, now we just gotta keep riding along, so.
We appreciate you and your hard work and your teams, great job, Christie. Alright, Maggie, wanna report for tourism?
Sure. Yeah, definitely kudos to Christie and her staff, um, you know, we're continuing, it's, all I can say is that, if I thought last year was the record tourism season, this year is gonna top it by leaps and bounds, I mean, we're seeing people earlier and earlier, um, you know, coming through the office, on Friday, I had, like, ten different couples come in, I mean, we were slammed, um, and so. Yeah, I think we were in a Zoom. We were, and I saw myself. Ding dong. Yeah, I'm like, there you go, so. But, you know, um, and we're seeing them, you know, from the northeast, which is not traditional for us, um, so, you know, we're getting busier and busier, I can say, you know, for example, um, our transient tax, we're gonna end the year, um, at the highest transient tax that we've had probably in six to seven years, so, you know, things, tourism's really good, and we wrapped up our travel season in the beginning of March with the Knoxville Boat Show, um, had, had good response there, so, we, we really spent the winter cultivating, you know, that visitor and that guest to the city, um, you know, we were represented at the Mini Store Summit in Ashland, um, that was a really great opportunity.
And I heard you did a great job presenting.
I tried.
Maggie Monholland presented at the Mini Store Summit and knocked it out of the park, I heard.
I did, I was, I was, um, invited to speak on a panel, and was humbled by the opportunity, but the summit was all about, uh, downtown, um, revitalization and tourism, so it was nice to, to be, uh, with my colleagues and share the knowledge that I've, I've gained from working with Corbin, so, um, and then this weekend, this past weekend, we hosted a hundred and fifty egg orders at the Laurel Lake through the Kentucky Bass Nation, um, which is like the prequel to Bass Master Classic, um, and then this weekend, this Saturday, we'll host another tournament with about two hundred and fifty egg orders, and then in April, we have the mountain biking tournament, so, April second, so, um, lots of great things going on, um, in the city, uh, thanks to Public Works, um, you will notice that we have new banners on Main Street. Beautiful. Um, they turned out really well, and I wanna thank the crew for, um, making sure that those got up in time for all the blooms, and then we are in the heavy planning, uh, stages for Colonel Fest, so, now that we're in a regular meeting, I would like to request of the commission, um, to allow the closure of Main Street from second to Gordon Hill on April twenty-third, from seven AM to eight thirty PM, for us to host the event.
Is that on a Saturday?
It is on a Saturday.
Is there anything else going on, is there car shows or anything? Is that enough street closure?
Yeah, that's plenty.
So, second to Gordon?
Yes.
Make a motion, close the street?
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmus?
Yes. That's it?
It's announced.
Great, great things going on, thank you.
No problem.
Alright, just kidding.
I would say this, during the Thor Summit, Maggie and I both attended it up there in Ashland, and the city manager from Ashland came around Portland, and said, I've never heard Corbin mentioned so many times, he says it's supposed to be in Ashland, so, we have free representation on all, but Maggie, but the hollers there too, is accountable.
That's awesome.
Super proud of our team. Uh, does anybody need to address the Board of Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Set motion.
Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmus?